And it's down in Columbia, Texas. She's down there for a week and they go through all the train just like law enforcement. And even in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, they're up running and doing all that kind of stuff. So it's really, these kids are special. These young men and ladies are special because a lot of people that age don't really want to go before 4:30. They even PT, you know. So I'm proud of her. She's been three years in and she was the leader last or assistant leader. Assistant chief the second year, okay? And then the rest of them, they attended the South Carolina Association of Law Enforcement Explorers on June 27th or July 2nd. And the explorers, I would say, stand up. Lou, Lou, Ben Viner, Nick Carter, and Josh Lee. They went down to the scale competition, which was, it was teams from South Carolina, Tennessee, and Georgia they competed against. There were 13 other law enforcement explorers down there. So there was a lot of competition in there this year. And I just want to, y'all, understand what they accomplished. It is all these medals they've won here is the individual events. Ben Viner placed second in this four riding. And then on the TR 310 vehicle collision report, he placed third place. All right, team events. And what you got to understand about these events, it's not, when they go into these events, they don't have any idea what they're going into, what kind of scene it is, just like us responding to them. And now I'm the one called, we arrive on scene, then we assess the situation, and then take it from there. And that's what they had to do with this. It's real life. I mean, it's actually, they got actors just playing these parts and vehicles. They go to a scene and observe it, then they take their actions. And the domestic violence being out of all 13 teams, let's see, was Ben Nick placed first place. They got first place out of all the teams. So that was an aspirated accomplishment. They had another call was active shooter, which I think there were four of you were involved with that. And they took second place out of all these teams. High-risk traffic stop was a felony traffic stop. They placed second in that. Crime scene investigation, they placed second in that. So that goes to show you the work and hours these guys put in for this county. And to be, it's a recruiting tool. I would take all of these guys because they've been through the train. They understand, they're dedicated young men and women, and that's what I really appreciate about them. But, you know, Wes, he's kind of started hitting the program up. He's sitting back here in fact. So he started kind of hitting this program up. But these guys are trained by our deputies and our investigators that work in Union County. So out of 13 teams, they did, they had all these accomplishments. That goes to show you the type of individuals that's working for Union County in law enforcement and what they stand for and what they pass on to the young men and young women. So I just wanted to bring them forward, counsel, let y'all know, let the county know what a good program this is. I'm proud of it. We've got a lot of people doing a lot of, a lot of hard work, putting in a lot of hours, and they really put in a lot of hard work. So I appreciate y'all letting me do this. It means a lot to them and it means a lot to me. Thank you.
Sheriff, while I got you up, my folks, my little impact here, you just spoke so little business. I'll just jump real quick.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you just real quick?
Sure.
I want to point out the fact that these explorers have been helping Jeff at community events like fireworks. Where else can I see them?
At the Putback anyway.
Yeah. So they've been actively involved in stuff other than a textbook.
And Tim can be a little complex.
Yeah.
And I wanted to both, I think, Wes, and I know that Wes, you stand up here. I know you spend a lot of hours. We want to thank you as well. We know you put forth a lot of effort, and we really appreciate you doing that and helping share in his office.
He does run out of explorers. He's also been wanting to help to get these grants and provide us with equipment to be, and helps help the county support money go to these programs.
Well, I am.
I want to thank you.
And I want you to stand right there, speaking with council. If you look down on the jump real quick to, it's the first item, item 10. And it's for us to accept a South Carolina Department of Public Safety grant award. It's for $402,874,000. This grant's a zero-match grant, and it takes care of four SOR officers. Their salaries, their fringes, all of their equipment and vehicles. And, you know, this is something that the county has done years and has received. And Wes actually picked the ball up this year writing that grant. And it came through falsely just like we knew it would. So with that, I would undertake a motion from council. We have a motion from Councilman Clough, second by Councilperson Smith. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. And it is your name. Sheriff, thank you for what you do. Wes, thank you for what you do. Guys, thank y'all for representing Union County. Great. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move back up in order. We're at item eight. We have some board vacancies. Do we have any that would like to make any recommendation of any board vacancies? Any recommendations? Any recommendations? Hearing none, I will move to the next item and recognize our community development director, Ms. Kathy Jo Leisner, for presentation.
So we're very excited to have Megan Deedoff with Charter Communications with us tonight. We're waiting on Joe Prater to come in, so I'm sure he'll join you as soon as he comes in. These guys are going to give an update on the broadband expansion projects that have been in our community for quite some time. We've been working on this for about three to four years. Megan is going to talk a little bit about an event that's coming up in September. But I also want to make mention of Charter does a lot for communities, not only in South Carolina, but across the U.S. And Union County has actually received contributions to assist with Renaissance Park, the build out there, and also, most recently, a contribution to the Union Community Foundation that will go to a local nonprofit organization that will be providing some digital education resources to the communities, and that will be presented on September the night. So we appreciate all that you guys do. I'm gonna step over and help you slide.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to take a little bit of your time today. My name is Megan Deedoff, and I am the Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications, which is the Spectrum brand. And I will have with me Joe Prater, who will join us as soon as he gets here. He sent me a meme of a race car driver. He's coming from North Carolina down 85, so any second. So while he's coming, I will go ahead and get it started. I started with the company, Jimmy Barry, and so I'm especially grateful for your time because my entire role at Charter is centers around being a resource for local governments and their staff. So if you are hearing any issues in your communities, if there are opportunities for us to partner up, if you have questions, comments, or concerns, I'm your point of contact. I did just hand around this folder here, which has a lot of information in it. But if I could highlight a couple of the one-pagers in there, I would encourage you to look at the one-pager regarding our preparations and response for hurricanes. It is hurricane season. Saw, I think, later in your agenda, you'll be talking about Helene impact. So this is something that we take very seriously. Broadband is a critical infrastructure, so I would encourage you to look over that. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. We also have a one-pager on our low-income internet assistance program. So if you were to qualify for programs like assisted school lunch, you would qualify for a low-cost broadband service. And then finally, there's a one-pager on Spectrum News, which just launched in South Carolina back in April. It is a 24/7 unbiased news, sports, and weather coverage channel. Ever since it's launched, we've got a, we have been number one in June, surpassing all broadcast cable news networks based on unique household reach just in South Carolina. And in June, over half of Spectrum video subscribers in South Carolina watch Spectrum News for at least five minutes, which is the highest of any network in the state. This is an excellent resource for you because it is something that you can use for your constituents. But we also have a public affairs show called In Focus, where we just talk about for a whole half hour issues that are affecting South Carolinians specifically. We love to bring on local organizations and elected officials to talk through those issues as well. Okay. So the other thing that's in that is my card, and it has my information. So please don't hesitate to use it if something were to come up. So let's go ahead and get into our presentation, Kathy Jo. I do want to thank you all for your partnership. Kathy Jo mentioned this, that y'all have been with us from the very beginning of these rural broadband expansion efforts. They have been an enormous task, and I cannot thank you enough for your partnership. I also can't thank Kathy Jo enough. I know Joe is going to come and sing her praises as well. But she has been an excellent resource for us and for me personally, if I get to know the county, and just been a delight to work with. So let's get going here. Okay. I'm going to start by talking about Charter's impact nationally and then in South Carolina specifically. I won't talk long about this, but there are some more information in your folder there. And then Joe, when he gets here, will come up and talk specifically about the rural broadband expansion bills in Union from ARDOF and ARPA funds that we've done. Charter is a leading broadband connectivity company and cable operator, providing high-quality, competitively-priced products and outstanding customer service. We are number one, the number one rural broadband internet provider in the country, as well as the fastest-growing mobile provider. Our U.S.-based workforce consists of nearly 95,000 employees who help us to maintain and build more than 31 million customer relationships and 900,000 miles of network infrastructure. As you can see, we've put in nearly $47 billion in capital investments in infrastructure technology across the country, and a lot of that has been this rural broadband build. We are located, our footprint is in this blue area, and where you see the darker impacts, especially here in the Carolinas, is where we're very heavily focused. If you would please, thank you. Let's see. In South Carolina, specifically, we serve over 980,000 customers. And in 2024, we extended our network to reach an additional 89,000 new homes and businesses, including 35,000 new locations reached through our rural construction initiative. We've got over 3,000 South Carolina employees, and we serve 228 communities across the state. Last year, we paid $112 million in taxes and fees and made $575 million in capital investments in this state alone. Our philanthropic initiative, the Spectrum Community Center Assist, helps us to revitalize community centers across our footprint, both naturally, nationally, and here in South Carolina. Just recently, I helped with one in Greenvale. We brought a bunch of Spectrum employees, helped revitalize the community center, and then gave them a $50,000 donation. And then last month, I got to go up to Florence County, and we did some digital education for seniors and helped teach them to learn how to be safe on the internet from scams and other sorts of terrible things. So we like to say that we live where we work, and we strive to be good members of our community. And Joe is here, so he's just in time. I'll step aside and let him talk about Union County more specifically. Thank you all so much.
Thanks for the hard act of following. Lou just got back here, so thanks for having us. I will say, since the last time I've been in Union, there's a lot more fiber on the coals out here, which is great. So if we can move to the next slide, I'll give an update on where we're at with our fiber deployments. We've got a lot of commitments in the county. This is kind of a snapshot of what we did under the ARPA 1.0 program with the state. The blue areas there are what we are already building through our commitment to the FCC. It's called the ARDOF, the World Digital Opportunity Fund. So that's what we're already building for them. The dots that you see in there are all of the locations that were kind of in the gaps that weren't otherwise picked up. And in partnership with the Office of Regulatory Staff, the South Carolina Broadband Office, we were awarded in late 2022 those 1,357 locations across the county. We were originally supposed to finish it by the end of last year, but unfortunately with Helene, everything kind of got delayed. And so they pushed that due date out to end of April this year, which we ended up finishing it by. So all 1,357 of those locations were activated. It was about approximately 235 miles of fiber that we installed. So if we go to the next slide. Okay, we go to the next slide? Sorry. Well, while we're waiting, I meant to kind of preface the conversation with the longstanding relationship we've had with Union County, particularly Kathy Jo has been a great partner from the beginning. I think the first time we met to talk about broadband disparities was maybe 2021?
2007, right?
That's right. And we partnered together on an application with the federal government, NTIA, for a grant back then, and unfortunately, we didn't get it. But we didn't give up, and we continued to work together. We had a couple of community stakeholder meetings to continue to talk about where these additional gaps are, which helped us in that ARPA 1.0 program. And then in the state's 2.0, which was Capital Projects Funds, we went after additional remaining locations, and that's the 1,091 that you see in the small pockets in the northern and southern part of the county. That accounted for about approximately 140 additional miles of fiber. We have until the end of this year to complete that bill, and as of right now, we're on track to do so. We actually recently, in the last couple of weeks, had our site visit with the Office of Regulatory Staff. They require that for all of our bills. We kind of get out and drive around and show them where the infrastructure is being put in place. They take pictures, again, just to make sure that the investments are actually being fulfilled. So when we'll complete that one, that'll round out a good chunk of what's left in the county. Anything that's left, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the BEED program. That's another federal initiative that works with the states to get additional broadband out. There were some changes to the rules of the program recently, in the last couple of months, but the net-net of it all is applications are currently with the state. And after they go through all of that, if there's any additional locations left in South Carolina counties, they'll work directly with all internet service providers to negotiate directly to try to figure out a way to fund those locations to try to get us to as close as we can to 100% coverage. So the point here is that our final commitment through the state as of right now is on track to be completed by the end of this year. I want to talk a little bit about some of the resources that the state has on their website around the data, on where these locations are, what investments have been made on the Office of Regulatory Staff website, and I can provide a link to that. I think they call it their digital drive. They have all of these county PowerPoint slides and breakdown of the statistics of those locations that are without service. The one on the right kind of shows the pre-investment versus post-investment. So that's between us and all the other providers that are working in the county, you know, what it'll look like after it's all said and done, which, again, we're getting down to very few locations, and hopefully will all be picked up under the BEED program that I just talked about. And if we go to the next one, there's another really good tool on that same website that the Broadband Office has. It's called their Investments App Map. And this shows all of those commitments by all providers across all of the different programs. They're all color-coded that way. And if you go to the next slide to show an example, you can actually zoom in to the address level. So if you have a particular street address that you want to know about, you can go to their Investments Map, put in the street address. It'll go down to that level. You click on the project area, and a little window callout will show you who it was awarded to, what the investment was, more importantly, what's the timeline? When are they supposed to be done? And so as I talked about earlier, our last commitment through the state is due to be completed the end of this year. Our ARDOF is also all due to be completed at the end of this year as well. So we're in pretty good shape in Union County. It's broadband deployment is difficult. It takes a lot of coordination with the permitting entities. And I know Kathy Jo has been a big supporter of us through the whole process. And we're really excited to be where we are today. If we go back to 2021, we've come a very long way. And we're excited to continue to work with the county to reach as many people as possible. So I think that is it, but, oh, sorry, how could I forget? On September 9th, we are having a broadband roundtable. You'll see here it'll be at Main Street Junction from 9 to 11, where we'll be having some breakfast, thanks to Midway Barbecue, some networking, and just some overall discussions about broadband, you know, where are some of the remaining gaps? Just to make sure we're continuing that conversation, to make sure everyone gets covered while this federal opportunity is still available. I think that's the last slide. So happy to take any questions. I'm sorry, I literally just zoomed in, spit all this out, but happy to take any questions on the air. Awesome. Well, I can't say thank you enough to everybody. Like I said, broadband deployment is a team, it takes teamwork. It's not just us deploying, but it's the community stakeholders, permitting entities, the county and local governments when it comes to permitting. And we look forward to working with everybody to get the word out that the service is available because adoption can sometimes be a difficult issue as well. So thank you again.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Meg.
Joe, I have a question. I've gotten several calls from the lower part of our county. I'm sure the county of Land got this call too. They're working on a road called Hunter Road. And it's very end of the county. We carry other representatives down. But anyway, they're working there now, but there are three homes on that very same road that is not, that are not being covered. So can you, is there any explanation or?
Sure. I mean, I'd love to take a look at the homes. I'm not sure which ones, but we can see if it's included in a bill, or if not, how we can try to get it added. So before Megan or I leave, I obviously want to get you our email address. And that goes for, if there's any other addresses, please just send them to us. We can see if it's included in a bill, or if it's not, how we can try to find a way to get it included.
Joe, I will, first of all, thank you and Megan for coming. And I do know that we are especially lower part of the county in getting those phone calls. I think Councilman Glenn gets them a bunch. I'm sure Ms. Curtis Hand does just from living down there and in naturality. So it's good to know we have y'all as a resource, and we can get that information and get it captured and get it to you and get an answer.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the next. All right, we'll move to the next... I thought you had a question. I'm moving to, we have a list of grants we've already done, the SRO. I'm moving to our hazard mitigation grant consideration. I think a few months ago, you remember, we asked you for a total of $63,000 for council to consider funding a evaluation of a bunch of those, as a matter of fact, of 30 different sites, for potential generators. These sites would be community-based areas, such as fire departments and charging stations, and for their operations, it would be for county buildings, continuity of government, and it would also be for shelter locations, so that in the event of a bad storm, hurricane, ice storm, whatever that may be, we had places set up in our county for our citizens to negotiate if they need that. Of course, y'all funded that. This has been a very, very fast-moving grant. We already had the consultant come in, we had gone to each one of these facilities, had been evaluated. As a matter of fact, on the list, you can actually see what the generator size by electrical engineer says that they need to be provided. The total of these grants, and they're being done in three different phases, it's one grant, but we are breaking them down into three different groups. But the total for all of this, and if y'all seen the documentation that I shared with you, it's about $2.6 million. There will be a 25% match that the county would have to make, and that's going to be about $664,000. We will not know if we will receive this grant until September of 2026, which means we have more than a year of plan for it. And we could not start construction until September or October of 2026 if we receive the grant. The state of South Carolina has gotten somewhere between $120 and $150 million for what they're calling a mitigation grant. There's a very high probability we'll get this. What I'm asking council to do, because we have to send this back pretty quick, oh, and I'm sorry, the grant matches $620,865. So, you know, just, you might as well say $621,000. What I'm asking council to do is to go ahead and approve the grant, so we can submit for it. I'm going to ask council to identify a potential funding source, knowing that we have a year to generate these loans or portions thereof, so it won't be a hit at one time. Your options are our capital fund, which has $2 million to us presently, or our community development fund, which has $2 million in. Here, all the information you see, which you will provide in our council package, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept. I'd take it out of community development.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood to accept and take it out of community development? You know, who, Ms. Carolyn, you second, Ms. Carolyn Rutherford second that motion? At this point, are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. The next grant consideration we have is to consider approving an additional $149,910 in local funds to match constructions at the Buffalo Mill Pond Site. Last one, I told you that the ARC was going to fund $263,000, and that our CTC can match $150. While our local CTC fund did agree to do that, state committee said, no, that's improper use of funds, and they asked me to still buy an additional fund. I have talked to legislature. I am happy to tell you why there's still work ongoing. Both DNR and FARD, which is your public parks, have both, and I don't have this in writing, but I have this represented in the GILL, are both going to provide $25,000 each for a match for this. So that would have us having to match, at this point in time, just under $100,000. Again, why are we having to do this? When this project was originally proposed and approved by council, it was four years ago. Because of the time it has taken to get an Army Corps of Engineers permit, the cost of construction went up from the proposed $400,000 to $793,000. So the county, Union County, has already committed $180,000 to this project. If we are to apply another $100,000, you can see what our total investment is. What is the scope of the project? A complete dredging of pond, a complete redo of walkway, playground area, and creating lighting around the park. With this information being offered, do I have a motion to accept?
I have a motion, I say.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Sinclair, second by our Councilman Wright. Before we have any questions, also, we have the same funding sources, either capital or community development. And may I recommend, let's just do out of capital, since we did community development the other. So would y'all?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. So any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. Following up with the Buffalo Mill Pond Site project, ask council to consider approving the contract to Lowbend, which is Upstate Grading Incorporated, for the Buffalo Mill Pond Site Improvement Project. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion by Councilman Sinclair. I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. And it is approved. Resolutions. I have a resolution number 2025-04, authorizing Union County to take ownership of the Union County Dry Cleaners property. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilman McLean. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilman Flood. Any questions? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, once this is done, then the city will own this property again?
As it stands, no, ma'am. We would take ownership of the property. The property is now currently owned by the Langley family, and it's actually in the state. So we are taking this from the Langley family, and we will retain ownership until what time county council wants to get rid of it. And the way the grants are set up is that it would be made as room space, so that once after five years extends, you can do what you want to with the property. That's the highest degree of cleanup. Did that answer your question, Greg? Any other questions? Do I have a motion to say? Have any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Unanimous. This will be third reading of ordinance number 404. It's an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the Buffalo Mill property to the City of Union and other matters related thereto. We started this process well over a year ago, February would have been a year ago, where we had our first joint city and county council meetings to discuss what our options were at Buffalo and the mill site property. After all the months that this project has gone on, this is still the only option we have to have this cleaned up, through use of a federal grant. So, otherwise, I don't know how we did it clean up. We've had two readings and a public hearing on site in Buffalo relating to this. So with this information being received, do I have a motion to accept this ordinance, third reading?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Sinclair.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Flood. Have any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. At this time, I'll look over to, I can see we have three elected officials in our midst. This is great. So ladies first here. I'll look for Ms. Debbie, you have anything?
I do. Okay, everybody's doing well, but I'm calling out the citizens of Union County. Now, their credit cards right now, due to us offering issues that we're here working on getting fixed, and also it's very concerning to find that we, on this line, are going to have to go up on the ready to increase it to be able to offer this commodity. I ask that y'all be patient with us. We're trying to get ATM machine in there, which is going to go in there, and hopefully that'll help, hopefully everything we are trying to do, they will be for taxes, but hopefully we get it done real quick. But I just ask you to be patient with us.
Hey, Dad, and Ms. Debbie, there is a meeting Thursday morning, and where most of this should be taken care of, and the ATM machine is on order. So Ms. Debbie's been working very, very diligently on this.
Clear up something. You're going to increase fee for what?
The charges.
Credit card transactions.
When I came in with Global, and we lost money a big time using the credit debit cards. So I got on the debt line, and we were real good, so I was able to decrease the credit card 1.75%, and $3.95 for debit card. But I'm afraid we're going to have to go up to 2.35% to be able to offer it, but it's a softer people. There's too many hands in the pot, and we got a paywall on them, so.
All right, I cleared it up.
And I would like to make a point, you can still come in and pay with a check and not have to pay that, and you can pay cash with that. We still have a drive-through, you can come in, but we also offer online pay if somebody would like to do that, but yes, if you use that credit card or debit card, a fee will be attached. So, thank you, Ms. Debbie. Madam Clerk, Ms. Stephanie Kitchens?
And I will, the courthouse has an ATM machine, and if I'm not mistaken, the fees for that machine might be a little bit cheaper than some of the other ATM things around, so if somebody needs to go over and use the ATM until that one's installed in the Go Build, then that's an option. But with the courthouse, I have to say that with the wonderful teamwork of Solicitor's Office and Public Defender's Office, we have ruled out on some of our cases in general sections and in common plates, and we're looking really good on our numbers, and our administrative judge is really excited about that, so I'm happy to report that we're doing really well on the court side of the office.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Yeah, just a listen, we had the bookbag giveaway, that school giveaway, and we had a great success here, I understand there, we had a lot of people. We gave away a lot of our bookbags this year, so we're heading on up, trying to reach our goal every kid in Union County, get a bookbag, and it's still supplies, so I just think it might have made all the businesses and all the individuals who live with us, and all the different clothes that have distributed backpacks, so I did everybody.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right, we'll move into the supervisor's report, and I sent that separately in an email today, and it will be a part of the council package that goes out with minutes. I'll start off with the financial package, and we are finished the, what is known as the 13th month, and we'll begin to start working on our audit items. I think we've done pretty well. I'll still wait for some of our audit items to happen. We have not received our local option sales tax dollars from the state, and typically don't receive those, to about the 15th to 20th of August, but that would be for the preceding year. I would also like to make the point that Republic Landville has been closing out one of its sets, and to do so, it just so happened it coincided with North Carolina cleaning out Lake Lure, and some of that debris that they had in Lake Lure, and it being coming to Republic. So it is very nice to say that we've sent an increase, a very good increase amount of our tipping fees from Republic, due to this temporary project. We're hearing that it probably will be maybe through September, and then we'll start seeing it go back to normal scales, but the sludge that they're hauling out of Lake Lure is helping to bury and cover up that sale. So we hate that, we hate that HALEEN happened, and we all suffered, and I know they suffered a lot worse than we did. There is some good that is coming out of it. They're closing the sale, we'll get a little bit extra revenue out of it. I think next month, I'll be able to share a little bit more clamoritely, a little bit more transparently of what our roll over will look like, but I can't tell you that we were under budget, and that our revenues are looking at home normal, is what we have been doing so well and good. As far as the supervisor report I sent out, it's really almost, in a lot of cases, a year to date, from last July to the end of June. There's a lot of great information in this report, and I think if you go through, you see the staff is very, very busy. I'll make the point to look at Dalton and Jamie, and what they were able to do, 17 industrial scientists, 660 total capital investment, that's millions, and 765 job creations. So when have we ever been able to say that we did, you know, almost $700 million worth of new investment in Union County? That's good things that happened just last fiscal year. I'll move on over to the project side, and part of what I sent y'all was an actual advertisement for Landings Planning Commission, is going to have some public meetings. Now, these meetings, and you can see this is getting ready to go online, so you can see where these dates are, you'll see draft documents. The meeting locations were sent to y'all, and there was a hope from the planning commission, they were known by districts, so there was a hope that some of y'all would be able to attend those meetings, so you could be there when they were being presented, just to hear and see what was going on. I will tell everybody, when the document comes out, please read the document. This document is not what was out two and a half years ago. It is a much different document, and it is a document crafted to protect our current homeowners as we are today. That was our goal, that was the committee's goal. We know we're growing, and we need to, we know that we need to have some planning, some ability to plan for the future, but at the same time, we don't want to trample anybody who's given rights to have that piece of property and do what they want to with it. And I do believe that this planning committee has worked really diligently. I'm surprised some of us still have hair in it, but they've been able to work through this. But the document that's being presented is not the document, it is not the plan. This is designed to get your feedback and input in the plan for whatever it may be. This is an opportunity for you to read it. Tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like, or something you don't like, make some offerings on what it might look like. This committee has been very open here, they've met with a lot of people, but at this point, they want the public's engagement to help them with it. So I would like, if this is not the plan, it is a working plan, and we would love to hear from our constituents at these meetings. As the rest of our projects go, I know that we have a vote to proceed on with building permit fees, and I'm holding back on that, just because there's additional numbers coming in, and I want to take, well, I'm going to ask for another year's variance on that. If we start running shy, I'll come back and ask for council contingency funds, but right now, we'll take another year and look at this. We got bigger fish to fry than to be worried about dealing with this. We know we can cover this, so we're just move forward with it. The jail addition, we are pending a fire marshal approval and SEDC approval on the jail, and we're waiting for these to get set up. We have a list of properties we're still going to get rid of. We just took care of the Buffalo Mill Pond Improvement. Ross Thompson Hospital is still pending, coming out of bankruptcy committee. I received an email last week that said, this should happen any day, but I still haven't had the email that says it's yours. So, you know, until that happens, I'm not going to be excited. Once it happens, I'm going to be excited, so. Maintenance shop is broken ground. The animal shelter, that project is still on go. We're, I'm hoping to have some type of pricing next month, say, this is what it's going to cost for the grading and the construction. We're working hard towards that. Still waiting on our engineering architect to bring us a final, I would say a final draft, but a prepared draft for another public hearing for attempted park expansion. The courthouse, we have a contractor coming to look at the dome roof of our courthouse. We found out about- We found out about three months ago, two months ago, that we had tentacles up and underneath that dome, and that we had some leaks in it. We actually had architects and engineers come in, and while they were here, they evaluated the majority of the structure. What they found is, is the structure itself, and there's more to follow up, the structure itself's in pretty good sound conditions, but the roof is a tin roof, and it's gotta be fixed. So they're coming on site tomorrow to give us a price estimate of what that will be, and then from there, we'll move on to what other things that we may need to do to continue improving that courthouse. Nothing's been done to that courthouse since 1911, other than some paint, some carpet, we need carpet, we need paint right now, but I don't want to go through and putting that type of money into a courthouse if we need to replace stairs, if we need to do other things that make it sound, because we want it to last for another 120 years. Recycling centers are still working, fire service study, if you will look at the report as you're looking over and reviewing it, you will actually see some of the data that we have gotten back from the fire consultant, this is just data they perceive, they're still working on the study. So your Union County staff has done a tremendous amount of work over the past year, my goal to finalize this and put it in a published report as soon as I can, but that is a lot of data, and so, and also, all the members of our media have this same data, so they can talk about some of the things that we've done. With that being said, I move into committee reports, and I do know that we have a pending finance committee whenever y'all want to think about doing that, but outside of that, I don't think we've had any committee meetings.
We haven't.
Do you, Mr. Finance Chair, do you know when you might want to call that meeting? Because it's important for you to be here.
Do you think? I'm good with next Tuesday. Want to go next Tuesday, guys?
I will be, I will not be available next Tuesday, how about filter next week?
Good God. That's bad.
Well, we can do it before 5:00, before our next council meeting.
No, no, we'll just do it. I like making you get out of, from home.
I don't have a home anyways, I did, Monday through Sunday.
We'll do it, we'll do it the 26th.
What, was that 27?
Six.
26, all right. Was that 26, good on you?
I thought we had something, I was reading something today, we have something on the 26th?
No, there was a requested meeting for this coming Thursday, but nobody was available, and so I'm gonna move out to September the 4th, and it was, it was the Airport Commission Board that wanted me, really with me, to make sure we were all on the same page. The House is welcome to come, is there open to the public, you're always invited. Well, we won't take a minute, so we'll be able to join.
5:30 sounds like a good time for the funny, gives David enough time to shut down the shop.
Yeah, we will be competing with location, I'll have to give us a location, because we'll be competing for a location, and I don't want to compete for a location, so Dave's good, I'll find his, find his location when anybody left.
I can change the date if it, I can change the date if we need to.
You want to do it on Monday?
That's fine, too.
25th?
Yeah.
How's Monday to 25th working out? 5:30 right here. All right, we'll get that out 5:30. Monday, 8:25.
I think sometimes we forget that week.
All right. All right, does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion to adjourn by Ms. Smith, so I can, I must look all those groups standing up.